Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I'm calling the October 21 City Council meeting to order. As a reminder, we still continue to have a remote aspect to our meetings. Both staff and members of the public may be participating in tonight's meeting remotely via WebEx. Before we get started, I'd like to announce that the administration is postponing the regular business item on tonight's agenda, AB 8894, school zone speed camera. This weekend, a question was raised by a council member about some of the traffic data collected that we were unable to answer before tonight's meeting. I'd like to postpone this item until the November 25 City Council meeting to allow staff time to pull together the requested information. First item on the agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I invite everyone to join us. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. The next item of business on our agenda this evening is special business, and it's ID 1709, the Hindu American Heritage Month proclamation. So I have missed out on collecting all the names, but I'd like to make sure that Shresh, Kumar, and Vijay come up, along with anybody else who wants to stand up here and hear the proclamation. Whereas Hindu Heritage Month is celebrated every October, which coincides with major Hindu holidays such as Navratri, and whereas Hindu Americans in Issaquah represent a variety of ethnic backgrounds, including individuals of Indian, Pakistani, Bangladeshi, Malaysian, Indonesian, Afghani, Nepali, Bhutanese, Sri Lankan, Cajun, Caribbean, and European descent, and whereas there are an estimated 1.2 billion Hindus worldwide, and approximately 2.5 million Hindu Americans living throughout the United States, and whereas our community has benefited from the many innovations of Hindu Americans, including, I'm not going to say this right, Ayurvedic? How do you say Ayurvedic?
Ayurvedic.
Ayurvedic, medicine, classical art, dance, music, meditation, yoga, literature, and community services, and whereas we commit to embracing diversity and inclusion by paying tribute to Hindu heritage through education, acknowledgement, and celebration within our community, and whereas the city of Issaquah is proud to recognize the positive influence of Hindu Americans on Issaquah's economic vitality, growth, and well-being. Now, therefore, I, Mary Lou Polly, the mayor of the city of Issaquah, do hereby proclaim October 2024 to be Hindu American Heritage Month in the city of Issaquah, and I urge the community, or sorry, October 2024, I urge the community to join in special observance and celebration of Hindu heritage. Welcome, and Kumar would like to say a few words.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, and honored citizens, and Hindu community members. It's wonderful to stand before you to share a few words about the Hindu heritage. Hindu heritage, it's not that was born recently, it's a timely memorial whenever it started, and it views the world as a community. It's one community, it's world community. It's for everybody. It's the Sanatana Dharma. We thank the city for providing us this wonderful opportunity to recognize the Hindu community and all the services, all the support that is provided by this community, to the city, and this wonderful nation. I am proud to be a citizen of the United States of America, though my birthplace is India. For us, both are our nations, and it provided us the opportunity to make this place better and for everybody. As Hindu part of this community, we got the opportunity to be with this wonderful people around, and I personally thank that I was part of this Issaquah Citizen Corps since 2010. I know Lindy Walz was part of that, and many others might have been trained as well, like Ting Jack was also trained, or a few others as well. It's wonderful to have you even for that support, and we come here for doing the service, but we love the people and stay there. And I'm currently serving as the Board Secretary for the Issaquah Citizen Corps, and it's my eight, nine, nine years of service there, yeah. And it's really wonderful for all the support that you all provide. And here, as a community members, they provide a lot of services in the senior center, and also we provide food for the shelters in Snoke County area, and also teens, our teens also go and help in the senior centers, helping them to, you know, do all the small projects, and that really helps motivate all these senior citizens. Not only that, there are through various forms of celebrations, Diwali and all the other celebrations, we again bring the community together. It's not one, it's together, everybody. That's the thing that Sanatana Dharma teaches us. And thank you again for the city and the mayor for recognizing this and accepting this as the world's Hindu Heritage Month. Thank you so much.
Should I entertain you all to take a picture?
Oh, yes, that would be a blessing, yes.
This is our proclamation holder. So thank you very much. The next item of business we have this evening is audience comments, and this is the time when members of the public may address the council in person or virtually. Those who signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first, and if you're joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand or send the host a chat message. If you're on the phone, you can press star three, and if you've joined by computer or smartphone, you can look for a hand icon. If you're in the room and did not sign up, I will ask for other speakers before closing this portion of the meeting. Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak for general audience comments that are indicated desire to speak this evening?
Yes.
Thank you. So for those making comments, you are invited to address the council regarding matters that are directly related to Issaquah's programs, projects, services, or events. Comments related to political campaigns are not permitted. Please direct comments to the whole council and not individuals, and while this is not a question and answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. When you are recognized, unmute your microphone if you're a virtual attendee. If you're in the room, please step up to the podium in the middle, and there is a microphone there, I'm just having a hard time seeing it. Make sure you press the button to get the red light on. State your name, address, and relationship to the city. Speak clearly and pause frequently, and please limit your comments to five minutes. If you're attending virtually and don't respond after your name or phone number is called, or if your connection is lost unexpectedly, the meeting will need to proceed, and you're encouraged to rejoin the meeting if able. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. Public comments, written and verbal, are an important aspect of the public process, and the city takes comments seriously. We thank you for taking the time to address us tonight. City Clerk, can you please identify the first person who has signed up to speak tonight?
Yes, in the room here, Chris Reichley.
Chris, come on up. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Chris Richley. I am an Issaquah resident up in the Issaquah Highlands for over 10 years. I also work in Issaquah, so I have the pleasure of doing that as well in the Highlands at Harbison Credit Union, so if you need anything, come see me. But tonight, I'd like to address the council, so good evening, council, and Mayor Polly, and staff and community. Having served on the Strategic Plan Task Force, I'd like to thank the council members for all the work they have done on the work plan, knowing that that's on the agenda tonight. Seeing that a majority of the projects are on track and some are completed, that is a tremendous amount of work that you guys have put into that, so I appreciate that, having worked on the strategic plan to see that that's continuing to stay alive in what you do. Knowing that the upcoming challenges of the new budget, I am confident council will continue to do their best to keep this work plan moving forward, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chris. City Clerk, is there anyone else signed up to speak, or anyone online indicating a desire to speak?
We have one member of the public with us virtually, but I'm not seeing a desire to speak.
Well, thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak tonight? Looking directly at the lady in the beautiful green dress. Just kidding. No. Okay, indication of no more speakers this evening. I want to thank Chris for coming in tonight. It's good to hear from the community about the work that the city council has authorized and the budget constraints that they have for this year. So thank you very much for coming and sharing that. As a reminder, you can submit written comments to the council at any time at citycouncil@issaquahwa.gov. The next item of business we have on our calendar this evening is the consent calendar, and I do not have any comments on tonight's consent calendar. I'm checking to see if there are any who want to comment on an item. I'm not seeing any indication. The consent calendar was distributed to council in advance, and if authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
Yes.
Thank you. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? Not seeing an indication to do that. Is there a motion to be made? Council President?
I move we approve the consent calendar as distributed.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Do we have any discussion on that item? Not seeing any. Hearing none, the motion before council is to improve the consent calendar as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed? That carries unanimously a seven and no vote. The next item of business was earlier mentioned. A regular business item, AB 8894, school zone speed camera will not be on tonight's agenda. And I'm going to ask if, oh, sorry, council committee reports, if we'd like to take a few-minute recess for our guests, if they would like to leave the room or stay for the business. You guys okay with a five-minute break? Okay. We're going to take a five-minute break, and you can decide if you'd like to stay for the rest of the meeting, but not necessary to. It also will allow council to go down and talk with you as well. Okay, we'll take a five-minute recess.
It's not like we have such a full agenda.
Yeah, it's a very short, no, it's basically just the work plan.
Yeah.
We'll be meeting at nine o'clock in the morning. November twentieth, there's a special LTAC meeting, Lodging Tax Advisory Committee meeting. It's at Tibbetts Manor. The agenda has not been set yet, but I think our normal time for start is three P. M. on November twentieth. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Councilmember Joe, can I get you to add one more item that you so graciously shared? And that was the chamber. It was the chamber. You had a compliment that got passed down, that you passed back to the council.
Oh, yes. Thank you very much. As many of you know, I'm the liaison to the Chamber Board. The chamber was very, they're very open in their praise of our police department and the quick response that occurred during salmon days. There was an incident that was reported near the food court and within about sixty seconds, the police were there taking care of the issue without a problem. More importantly, I think, or just overall, the impression was that the communication between the city and the Chamber Board was was great and the opportunities for any problems were quite low, both because of our police department and the chamber had a new security firm that they had hired that knew our city well and was able to make sure that everything was safe and people could really enjoy salmon days as was intended. So, thank you for that reminder.
Thank you very much for sharing that.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Hall?
All right. Another long report. All right. So, Eastside Fire and Rescue Board of Directors met on October ten and approved the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget. As you all know, because I've said this before, from beginning to end, the process was very challenging. It was also very instructive for the future. There's a lot of context as to how we got to where we are. For the purposes of this report, I won't get into too much detail. But happy to chat more with anyone who'd like more context. I've already had a chance to sit down with Deputy Counsel President D. Michelle. So, again, just reach out and I'm happy to chat more. For today, just wanted to share some highlights and some future work that we've identified. So, looking at numbers, Isqwa's total contribution for twenty twenty-five is about nine point five million dollars. That started at about ten point two million dollars in the very first draft back in July. For twenty twenty-six, about ten million dollars started at about eleven million dollars in the July draft, which means about one and a half million dollars in savings just for Isqwa from that original draft compared to now our twenty twenty-four contribution, our current contribution. This represents an increase of about thirteen percent across all three funds, ten percent for the operating budget. That's down from about twenty percent in the original proposal for all three funds. Like I've said before, through this process, the fact we really pushed maximizing cost savings to meet the financial pressures of the moment that cities are experiencing, we did this through a number of ways, what we called Budget Reduction Scenario One. Smoothing over the biennium wherever possible, a new financing strategy for apparatus, delaying, reducing, or cutting line items like new positions, training disciplines, overtime wherever possible, because that is a huge part of the operating budget, and more. Increasing our fees for transport and then also incorporating other new revenues, anticipating an increase in the EMS levy next year. The board also instructed EFOR staff to work with partner cities to update their fire permit fee schedules. The idea behind this is that there would be new pass-through revenues for EFOR to support their Fire Marshal's Office. So, that's something that we're expected to see sometime at a council meeting in the in the near future, or in the very least, staff will be reaching out to Isqwa staff soon to start having that conversation. At this time, we weren't comfortable making deeper cuts than kind of the reduction scenario one that I talked to you about. But I do want you to know that we did do our due diligence, considering things like freezing management positions and a battalion chief, eliminating positions in the Fire Marshal's Office in our core program, and rolling station closures across the district. Those were budget reduction scenarios two and three. We looked at the savings associated with that. We looked at the impact associated with those options. They were really hard to justify, at least for the committee. So, I also felt that there really wasn't a whole lot more room to push without losing support from people on the FAC, other partners on the FAC, and on the full board. So, that's kind of where we ended up in terms of the budget. As for future work, we've identified a number of important policy questions for the board to dig into next year. A review of our transport program and lost revenue due to write-offs. Thank you to Council President Walsh for highlighting that in our discussion. Studying new funding models like levies or levy lid lifts, or is RFA the right model to look for in the future or not. Considering, on one hand, policies around fund balance, and on the other, is it really appropriate for an agency like this to be having large reserves? How to be more strategic about our growth, and also really truly understand the real true cost of the growth associated with, for the partners? And then also whether or not our budget-making process needs refining or reworking. I think members on EFOR might have perspective into this, too, but it's difficult sometimes because the FAC gets referred to the budget, and then the FAC does it all with staff and support. And then it comes back to the full board and says, here it is. Okay, now let's adopt. So, if you're not deeply involved in it from day one, it can be very challenging come budget day. And we all know, you know, sitting up here, we like to have a touch already with things before we vote on it. So, there could be some work to refine that process. Anyways, next year's going to be a big year, is what I'm trying to say. I also made sure to stress that the agency should welcome more dialogue with partners, especially with city councils and with key city leaders. So, I'll be pushing for more information sharing and discussion outside of the boardroom, because I think that will help as well. Just to end, I want to just share that I'm very thankful, number one, to the board for acknowledging the financial challenges of cities and letting us walk down this path at all. I think there were some in the boardroom who could have just said no, even considering these things, but they did because of the power of our partnership. So, I appreciate that. I think we're very lucky. I also have a new admiration for the leadership of the chief and the professionalism of EFOR staff than I had. Really thankful for the most engagement of city staff we've ever had in the budgeting process at EFOR. I can't, I just really cannot understate the value, to me personally, Wally and Andrea provided to the budgeting process in support of the FAC and support of me as the city's representative. So, thank you. So, in summary, anyways, we have a budget, we have a process that's going to continue to get better. We have stuff to talk about next year, and now we can, you know, get on to the business of our own budget here in Isqwa. Again, reach out if you have any questions. And our next meeting is Thursday, November fourteenth. One more report. The Eastside Transportation Partnership is our last met on October eleven. We received an update on the I-405 SR-167 program and also a preview of the state legislative session from PSRC. Those presentations are on their way to you. We also started to review our draft legislative agenda for Eastside, for ETP. And I think Deputy Counsel President D. Michelle was on the update committee. So, there have been some changes to that. And then staff is going to forward us the most updated copy. Soon as we get that, we'll send it out to you to see if you have any feedback via email. And of course, we'll do our own comparison to the city's legislative agenda as well. And the next meeting of ETP is Friday, November eighth, and that finally concludes my report.
Thank you for the long report, but also thank you for the incredible amount of transparency that you brought and professionalism and just your very general wonderful calm demeanor in such a difficult situation. It was a heavy, heavy lift. So, great report. Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have two reports this evening. On October seventeenth, there was a ceremonial release of kokani fry at Lake Sammish State Park, and I was, I had the honor of representing the city at that event. The kokani are little redfish, and they spend their whole life cycle in Lake Sammish and in the tributaries and creeks that feed into Lake Sammish. So, they are really impacted by the conditions of the lake and by the management activities that take place at the lake and by conservation and supplementation efforts that are going into making sure that they are continuing to be a successful population of fish. We had a number of representatives from the other cities in our Kokani inter-local management committee, which oversees and approves the budget and work plan of the Kokani Work Group. We also had Representative Ramos, who spoke about funding that the state has put forward for light pollution reduction, which Isqwa continues to be a leader in that space. And actually, we're hoping to expand that work to, from Lake Sammish to other lakes, including Lake Washington, with that support. And then we also heard from partners, including but not limited to Trout Unlimited, and then the Snoqualmie Tribe. And the Snoqualmie Tribe also did a song. And after, after that, we were able to go out around dusk and release the little kokani fry into the lake and wish them well on their journey. So, it's a really, really great event and really the culmination every year of all of the work that all of the scientists, all of the staff members put in to make sure that we have, that we're continuing to support this really important population of little redfish. On October ninth, there was a meeting of the Public Issues Committee of the Sound Cities Association. I am the, I am the alternate member. Councilmember Martz was not able to be there for this meeting. And we did not take any actions, but we did have a number of interesting reports. The first one was, we had a report on the youth action plan of King County. We had a discussion about the rapid ride prioritization plan. Specifically, that one, that one, they went into all of the metrics that they used to decide where they're going to prioritize the bus lines, and really were just explaining the methods. And for all of these, there's detailed information that I can provide for any council members that would like more information. Public Health Environmental Services Division rates presentation and hazardous waste management program. On the rates, there was a discussion of the PIC about making sure that there was smoothing and there wasn't any steep rate increases based on the experience of many cities with rate studies and the sometimes large increases that occur over time. And then there was a presentation really about the process by which the SCA is going to create their legislative agenda for twenty twenty-five, not about the legislative agenda itself. That will come on November thirteenth, so looking forward to that. And then an update on the levies and ballot measures that will be on the upcoming, upcoming ballot as an informational item. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Ray?
Thank you, Mayor Polly. The Mobility and Infrastructure Committee met on October eighth here in council chambers. We had a single agenda item. It was COM-0034 Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program. We took a look at the proposed updates to the city's traffic calming program. The goal of the updates was to improve livability of neighborhoods by focusing on safety and comfort of residents. There was two, there were two objectives. One was community collaboration, and the other was streets for all users, so the enhanced feel of the street environment and aesthetics. The new program divides traffic calming into two phases. Phase one are items where there is no permanent physical infrastructure built and phase two, where there is a physical infrastructure that will be put in place and more permanent. The programs go through a plan initiation, a development stage, and then the phase two, which are the permanent enhancements, go through a plan support phase where there's active public engagement. And then those that are moving forward go into an implementation phase. The committee reviewed and provided some feedback to the administration on the new program direction, and we are expecting it to come back to council in November. At this time, the committee is not planning to meet in November, and that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Ray. Councilmember Martz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to thank Councilmember Hunt for covering Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee meeting for me. I think that was maybe the first time in fourteen years, maybe, that I didn't attend a PIC meeting. I had a medical emergency. So, thank you very much. Much appreciated. I was, however, here last week for the Council Services Safety and Parks Committee. I'm just going to give a quick overview, because both of these items I expect to come back to council. So, I'll just say that on COM-0049, one seventy-nine, First Avenue Southeast Surplus Report, the committee did support the staff, staff recommendation to surplus the property and sell it to the Isqwa Food and Clothing Bank. They assessed value, and he recommended bringing this item back to the full council for public hearing. And then on COM-0060, we received a park system plan update, and the consensus was to recommend adoption of the plan to the full council. And again, I'll go into more detail on those items before the full council. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Martz. Deputy Counsel President D. Michelle?
Thank you so much, Mayor Polly. On October eleventh, I chaired the Eastside Human Services Forum Board Meeting, and we elected new officers with Paul Lawley, who's the CEO of Friends of Youth, Bellevue Councilmember Janice Son, and Lake Washington School Director Lindsay Yocum, serving as Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary, respectively, and they will take over next month. The remainder of the meeting, the board reviewed a draft legislative priorities document, and thanks, Councilmember Hall, for reminding me, the document does align with the city's human services priorities as well. So, just wanted to make sure I said that. So, on October sixteenth, I attended the Regional Transit Committee meeting, and we received a report about Metro's efforts to strengthen their staff through recruitment and replacement. A very, very thorough examination of all of the things that Metro is doing to strengthen their personnel, I guess is what you would say. Metro continues to have hundreds of open positions, although they're less than a year ago. Sixty percent of those openings are for bus drivers. So, in response to the market, Metro is now offering full-time employment for drivers once they complete training. In the past, new drivers were required to begin as part-time drivers, and it could take as long as five years to work up to be a full-time driver. So, I continue to tell folks that driving bus for Metro is a great job with family wage compensation, substantial health and retirement benefits, continuing education, and opportunities for promotion, a welcoming environment for candidates from diverse and immigrant communities, and workplace camaraderie. So, perhaps we can work with our communications staff to get out the word that Metro is now offering full-time positions to new drivers. People will be able to walk into a good family wage job immediately upon passing the training session that they have. So, it really is a great place to work. And obviously, they will be able to increase the number of routes that they will be able to offer if they have enough drivers to cover them. So, whatever we can do to get more people involved with being candidates for bus drivers, the better our service might possibly be. So, that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Counsel President. Council President?
Thank you. Just a short report tonight to announce that council leadership has a scheduled meeting with the Isqwa School Board Leadership on October twenty-eighth for quarterly meeting. Still working out the agenda on that, but we will discuss the upcoming Q-one joint meeting that we will be hosting and trying to work on some schedule and topics for that, and then anything else that gets added to the agenda ahead of the meeting. That concludes my report.
Thank you. And the mayor's report for this evening, there will not be an executive session. This month, the State of Washington Tourism presented the Destination Stewardship Award to Visit Isqwa during the Tourism Industry Award Ceremony. The award recognizes an organization that provokes environmental awareness, institutes regenerative travel, or espouses community values and well-being in the state of Washington. Visit Isqwa has been a leader in working with the City of Isqwa community organizations to develop responsible travel options that enhance our community. Congratulations to Executive Director Kristi Gerrard and her board for this well-deserved recognition. We look forward to seeing many great things for their work. Today, Wash dot released the list of approved funding awards for the City Safety Program Grant, which provides funding for projects using engineering improvements and countermeasures to reduce fatal and serious injury crashes on city streets. I am thrilled to announce that the City of Isqwa will be awarded grant funds to improve the pedestrian crossings of East Sunset Way at Sixth Avenue and Second Avenue Southeast at Southeast Evan Street. The design work will begin this fall, and construction is estimated to take place before school starts in summer twenty twenty-six. Improvements to these pedestrian crossing locations were repeatedly requested by community members, so we thank you for bringing awareness to the safety concern. A special thank also goes out to Nick Green of the Public Works Engineering Team for his amazing preparation of Isqwa's local road safety plan and for preparing a successful grant application. The administrator, do you remember the value of the grant award? It's relatively significant.
It was over a million dollars, about one point five, if I recall.
Yeah, without requiring a match from the city.
That's my understanding.
Yeah. It's a significant, significant win for the community. So, well done, Public Works staff. Moving back over to our meeting, the next item for this evening is an informational update. This is ID-1759, Work Plan and Capital Improvement Plan Quarter Three Update. And I'd like to invite up and introduce you to Management Analyst Jillian Strobb. You'll come to the lectern and be making a presentation this evening. Jillian, we're so happy to
All right, great. Thank you. Like Mayor Polly said, my name is Jillian Strobb, and I'm a management analyst with the Executive Department. And tonight, I'm here to talk with you about the citywide work plan and capital improvement plan. There are no checkpoints or questions, so feel free to ask them as they arise throughout the presentation. You can skip ahead to the backgrounds. All right. So, this is a continuation of a practice that we've had of providing regular updates to the city council on citywide work plan projects and capital improvement plan projects that are identified through the biennial budget process. So, these are some of the previous checkpoints that we've had with city council on these. And with that, we'll start with the work plan. This summarizes the year-to-date progress and displays the statuses for all the projects in the work plan. As you can see, most projects are on track. Only nine projects are facing challenges, and twenty-three projects have been completed over the last two years. We're going to go through each goal area from the strategic plan and their respective projects that have changed status in the last quarter. So, with that, the mobility projects, as you can see, most are on track with a couple facing new challenges. So, first, Mobility 3A, Developing a Citywide Transit Plan, has had an improvement in status from on-track to complete. The result is that draft edits will be provided to the master mobility plan and the transportation element of the comp plan, both of which are coming to city council this fall. Secondly, the street standard updates has a worsened status from on-track to major challenges. This is due to delaying this project to prioritize ARPA-funded projects, which have a fund utilization deadline. This is a plan delay, and it relates to phase two of the project and the landscape strips. So, with that, we can move on. Growth and development, as you can see, most projects are on track or have been completed. And I'll note that there are two items that are scheduled to come before city council in quarter four of twenty twenty-four, and those are Growth and Development 4B, Developing Code Amendments to Address the Diversity of Housing, and the Comprehensive Plan Update. And with that, the environmental stewardship projects are also mostly on track. One project changed from on-track to minor challenges, and that's stormwater treatment. Staff has assessed the public stormwater facilities and now is assessing how much work it'll be or the level of effort required to map and assess private stormwater facilities as part of this project. So, that's led to a downgrade in minor, to minor challenges. Social and economic vitality projects, again, most projects are on track. And then there are two items with a worsened status, and those include social and economic vitality 1A, conduct a study and propose tools that will give Isqwa a competitive advantage to recruit employers that meet the city vision. Economic Development is looking at a forty-four percent vacancy rate in the I-90 corridor, and has been focused on filling individual vacancies. They've also had staff leave that program or leave that division, and they'll be using the rest of twenty twenty-four to assess how to best move forward with economic development priorities. And then homelessness, there have also been significant staffing challenges in this division and some departures. And the city also lost its partner for the Emergency Housing Pilot Program unrelated to the program itself. The division will be assessing finding a new partner for this program in twenty twenty-five. For city leadership and services, most projects are, again, on track, and a third of them have been completed. There are two with an improved status, City Leadership Services 2C. The Facilities Division has completed the facilities condition assessment, and we'll be proposing properties for surplusing throughout the rest of twenty twenty-four. And then Body-Worn Cameras is also complete. This was actually completed back in the spring of twenty twenty-four, when the department completed all of the trainings with staff who are going to be utilizing these cameras, and this has now become operationalized within the police department. All right. And then infrastructure projects, there have been no changes to any of the project statuses in the last quarter. And with that, if there are no questions, we'll go ahead and transition to the CIP.
Are any questions on the status updates? Head nods, no. Keep going, Jillian.
All right. So, again, this displays the progress to date through all the checkpoints with city council. As you can see, about half of the projects are on track. Twenty-six of them are facing some sort of challenge, and then twenty-three of them have been completed. This isn't unusual for capital projects, which may span more than the two-year biennium. So, with that, the mobility projects, we're not going to walk through all of these, but I do want to note the items with an improvement in status that have been completed. First, the East Lake Sammish Parkway Westditch Conveyance Project, this should actually be in the stormwater section, but I want to note that it was previously delayed due to needing to complete plantings during a specific time in twenty twenty-three. But this was pushed to twenty twenty-four, and all the plantings were completed in September. The Sixtieth Street Bridge connects eight residences with Two Hundred and Twenty-First Place Southeast over the North Fork of the Isqwa Creek. That bridge was completed this fall. And then the Old Town Traffic Calming, with the installation of the rectangular rapid flashing beacons this fall, that project has now been closed out. Projects with a worsened status include the dynamic messaging sign replacement. This project was already facing some challenges due to vendor delays for fabrication, but it was put on hold due to general fund constraints in twenty twenty-four. The same is true for signal cabinet replacement. It was previously on track but was delayed due to general fund constraint.
Councilmember Ray?
Thanks. Just really quickly, if you could, so that you highlighted two of the projects with major challenges. What are the other two projects that are struggling?
Yeah, let me refer to...
It's like phone a friend, and it's a paper friend.
Yeah. All right. So, the mobility projects with major challenges also include Newport Way State Route nine hundred and Southeast Fifty-Fourth Street improvements. And that project is still in the design phase, as well as the Community Mobility Investment Safety Bundle. And I believe that has been on minor challenges due to previous delays with finding a vendor and a consultant.
So, what's the, what's the challenge with Newport?
With Newport? Yeah, it is. Oh, there was a biological assessment that was supposed to be completed in quarter one of twenty twenty-three that took longer than anticipated, pushing out the timeline for this project.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Okay, let's keep moving, Jillian.
Okay. None of the projects in technology and systems changed, and I want to note that most of these projects will be finished in twenty twenty-four, with a few extending into twenty twenty-five as planned. For our capital equipment projects, most of these have been completed. No projects changed status this quarter. One project that is facing minor challenges is the Wireless Meter Read Hardware and Software Project. It was previously delayed due to vendors requiring the software contract in place before installing the hardware. There's a new timeline assessed for this, and it shouldn't face any more challenges. There's a new timeline assessed for this, and it shouldn't face any more challenges. With the parks projects, most are on track and a few are... Most are on track, and a few are facing minor challenges. None of them changed status this quarter. The Harvey Manning Park Expansion, the Hillside Park Loop Trail, and the Grandview Playground Equipment Replacement have faced conceptual design delays until the park plan update, the 25-26 budget, and some of the CIP discussions can be had. For facilities projects, there's an even distribution of on-track projects facing challenges and completed projects, and I'll note that the Main City Hall HVAC Replacement Project is now back on track after getting a contractor onboard with work beginning this month. The Public Works Office renovations had previously faced minor challenges, and scope needed to be reevaluated. That work has been completed. There's a new scope of work, and this should be completed in early 2025. The maintenance facility improvements have moved from major challenges to minor challenges. This project relates to the stormwater improvements in our storage yards, and it's facing minor challenges due to delays in finding a consultant for this work. Fire Station 71 has a worsened status listed here due to council direction to get more community input on this project and other facility projects in 2025, so this project is essentially on hold pending that community input. All right, stormwater projects, most of these are on track, and five of them have been completed. I'll note that the WashDOT Fish Barrier Removal is a project that's funded and managed by WashDOT. They anticipate this project will be completed on time. It was previously facing minor challenges due to delays in bidding. The Pickering Ditch Flood Control Project is now back on track. The timeline hasn't changed. This will still be completed by the end of 2024. The PFAS Investigation has moved to minor challenges due to delays in working with ecology on agreed orders. This process of working with ecology is new for all parties, leading to delays as both agencies work out the appropriate scope for agreed orders. At this time, they're expected to come to council or be drafted by the end of 2024. And I'm sorry, that one had moved from on-track to minor challenges. Similarly, the Sycamore and East Fork Stream Study moved from on-track to minor challenges as staff works with neighbors to gain access to the stream. Staff had held a community or an open house in September to this effect and continues to work with the neighborhood to gain access. All right, sewer projects, no projects have changed status this quarter. One of the projects will be completed by the end of 2024, and the remaining projects that haven't been completed will be completed in quarter one and quarter two of 2025. For water projects, most projects are on track, and two of them have improved in status. The Highwood Reservoir retrofit is now on track with a new schedule. This was slated to be completed in 2024, but there were delays due to weather, so the first reservoir will be completed by the end of October 2024. They'll stop work for the winter and then finish the second reservoir when weather permits from May to October of 2025. The Water System Improvements Project is newly on track. It was previously delayed due to permitting and supply chain issues, but those have been resolved, and this project was actually finished in April of 2024. All right, I want to pause for any questions before we wrap it up.
President?
Thank you. I'm sorry I missed this. It looks like there's a note saying that there were no changes in status for the parks projects, but I'm looking at it, there's a community park project for Confluence Park Eck House improvements, and I believe, considering we removed the funding for that, I would put that under some major challenges, but it's still listed with start construction in late October, early November, anticipated through May, July 2025. I'm wondering if the administration has any update on that that we don't know about?
Good evening, Council President, members of the council. This project that Jillian undertakes is a multi-month prize project, so this is just one item that was not updated. There's no change in status. The project's not funded.
Okay, so we can expect that to change on whatever documentation we have to show that it's not on track?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Questions? Councilmember Hall.
Thank you for the work and for the presentation. Sorry, I just thought of this question, so I'm sorry I didn't email it in earlier. The Community Safety Investment Safety Bundle, I said "safety" twice, the Community Mobility Investment Safety Bundle. We use ARPA or some sort of federal dollars on that, Ray. Are we worried about the timing of the delays on that? We still think we'll get it done within the required... Okay, I'm seeing nodding.
Yes, I'm sorry. That doesn't help.
Quiet nodding.
No, we feel confident that all that will be done in order to meet the appropriate ARPA spending timeframe.
All right, yeah, okay.
We have until the end of 2026 to spend ARPA funds. They have to be obligated.
As long as they're committed by the end of this year.
Committed, oh, the end of 26 to spend. Is that right? Okay, got it.
We are on track. We have no concerns on any of the ARPA spending at this point.
Perfect, thank you. And then, just a thought, the Fire Station 71, I wonder, I don't know, what do we think about maybe keeping it on track? It just seems like going to the community for more input doesn't necessarily seem like it goes into the minor challenges territory unless we had a particular date in mind that we were like, we hope this project would be done by now, and now it's facing some sort of minor challenges. But I didn't think we had a date in mind for the station, so if that's the case, I'm just curious why it was moved.
I believe that this was just the site selection portion of this project, not the design instruction portion, which of course would have a longer timeline, so that's why. But happy to change it if that's more appropriate.
Or just clarify it if you think it's not clear enough.
Yeah, or maybe even just clarify it in the narrative, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions? Not seeing any other raised microphones at this time. Jillian, thank you. Yeah. Great presentation, lots of information. That is the... There is no action requested of city council on this item, and council has asked a few questions, so we're going to move to the last item tonight, which is good of the order. And looking for microphones, Councilmember Mertz, Deputy Council President, and Council President.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As I mentioned... Pardon me. As I mentioned earlier in my committee report, I had a medical emergency two weeks ago and wound up spending a week at Swedish Isaguas. It was a bittersweet experience for me. On the one hand, I was quite ill and started off in the ER before segueing to the main hospital. I'm happy to say I'm expected to make a full recovery. On the other hand, I've been on council long enough that I voted on the various policies and variances that allowed the hospital to be built over a decade ago, such as the permit for the large diesel cistern that assures Swedish Isaguas able to continue vital operations during power outages. I received incredible medical care and come away very proud to have this amazing resource in our community. I also want to say thank you to the flood of well wishes I received from folks in the community, including the sweet card that you all here wrote to me. Never have I felt more connected to Isaguas nor been more proud and content to live here. Thank you again.
Sweet. Deputy Council President? Council President?
We are very happy that you are here. We really are. Just very briefly, a week ago on Wednesday, Candidates Forum was held here in the chambers and for the 41st and 5th District Candidates for Office, and for those folks who would like to see those, they are on YouTube, on the City of Isaguas YouTube channel, and can be viewed through the election. So just a reminder to everybody to vote. Thanks.
Thank you. Council President?
That reminds me, I should have put my...
I voted.
I voted to. Yeah, got to bring that out. Just a, you know, fun, quick reminder that I picked up our pumpkin earlier in the week, and so I am looking for anybody who is interested in decorating or engineering our pumpkin so that we actually get down the derby line. For anybody who doesn't know, the city as staff does a great pumpkin derby, and so council is invited to participate in it, and it's one of the loved events. So looking for any volunteers, and I saw your hand. Thank you very much.
Paper mache. So I have one item before I get into the next meetings, and I just wanted to express my gratitude to Councilmember Hunt for joining us tonight for the ribbon cutting for one of our capital requests from last year, which was a new education kind of conference room set up at the Cougar Mountain Zoo with animals in the room. So there are, I'm trying to think, parrots, sloths, and a porcupine habitat within the room that allows for these meetings, and we were able to get four of our six elected officials at the state level to join us for the ribbon cutting. Four, five, I think maybe five of our six elected officials, as well as Councilmember Hunt, and it was a very good event. You'll see some stuff out there on social media. We also were able to have our lobbyists there, and Councilmember Hunt was able to stay while we did a update for three of our elected officials at the state level on our comprehensive plan update. And so it was a great 30-minute meeting that we paired up with a ribbon cutting, so kind of a new strategy that we're putting together. If we get them all together, we did it in the room with the sloths. We did have to kick the parrots out because they were competing with us at one point in time, but anyway, it worked out great, and we're hoping to do more of that in the future. We recognize that the legislature, our representatives really appreciate getting the background information on what is going on in the cities with the legislation passed at state level. It's pretty good. And then, if there's no more good of the order, I'll go through the upcoming meetings. There's the Committee of the Home meeting next Monday, October 28th, at 6:30 PM, and the council will be receiving a presentation on the proposed 25-26 budget. The next regular city council meeting is on Monday, November 4th. The anticipated items include a public hearing on the 2025-26 budget, a public hearing on the 2025 property tax levy, a public hearing on the surplus of 179 First Avenue Southeast, the 2024 park system plan update, and the 2025-26 legislative agenda. I will not be in the meeting in person, and so Council President will likely be chairing that meeting, so I'm trying to attend, but it's much more effective when the chairperson is actually in the meeting and can see all of you. There is no executive session this evening, and with that, we are adjourned at 8:04.